It puts us in a rough place then, too.
Okay. Mayor, did you have a comment or a question? Council Rowley, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I'm looking at here, construction inspectors, so I'm thinking that's a little bit different than the chief building official. Where do all of the other inspections fall now? We're not doing them here under the municipality. Are we still doing them under the county? Like plumbing and those kind of things are under the county?
Not all of them are. Plumbing is county.
Sewage.
Sewage, septic is lower Trent, is it not? Or is it county as well? County as well?
Council Tadman, go ahead.
Only through speaking to some of the people in the building department, I think it's running a lot smoother now because I understand that there's two people there, is that correct, Preston, that weren't there before? I think one's your brother and the other's Susan, is it? Mary Ann, Mary Ann. So it seems as if they're not so backlogged now. I don't know, you're down there all the time. I just happen to be speaking to them a bit.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Yes, I share an employee with the building department, it's a 70-30 split. That's going to help a little bit with the inspections this year. They also have a contract position to help address their inspections. And then I guess seven or eight months ago, they hired Mary Ann. She's an assistant out front that is addressing a lot of the file needs and a lot of the public relations side of that, side of things.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's also important to remember that the building department is cost recovery, so it's not tax-supported. It's supported through the fees and charges we charge for the processes that go on in that department.
Thank you. Council Anderson, did you have a question? Your microphone is on. Okay. Council LeBlanc.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I don't know if it should be through the CIO or the finance. When we do cost recovery, are our costs in par with our municipalities that are charging for building permits and stuff to recover this?
We're not actually keeping up with some of the other local municipalities as far as that goes. But we did start a program of moving those fees up in the last two or three years to try to get there. But we're not quite there yet. A big improvement, but not quite there.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Well, you've already had a big jump?
We did a big jump two years ago.
Okay.
Any other questions for building? Okay, we can move on to Parks and Rec. And Jim, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time. It's on the report.
Thank you. Any questions for Parks and Rec Department? If they're all reading, does that mean no questions? Council LeBlanc?
Yes, through you, Deputy Mayor, through Parks and Rec. One of the things that you did when we put that big gazebo up there, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback on the movies at night. Are you still working towards that? Is that part of this budget? For screen and the sound system?
Yeah, it's part of the capital budget. It'll go out in two weeks, tender.
Are we still on for movies in the park this summer?
So that's for the equipment. Who's going to be taking care of the movies?
I'm hoping to work very closely with the community events committee to work on that.
Great. Good to know. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I was joking around. I didn't hear the answer.
Too bad.
Well, that's what I figured would happen. That's why I want to make sure.
Short and sweet. The community events committee, I'm hoping to work.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Parks and Rec? Okay, next is planning services. I don't think we have, we don't have a staff member. Any questions at all that staff could answer if needed? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
As we all know, we don't have much of a planning department right now. We have a number of holes that we need to turn our mind to in filling the director's position, plus the planner's position, plus the GIS position. So we've got three key vacancies within the department. As you know, we've retained Landmark to assist us on a six-month basis up until the end of June. I'm going to be meeting with them on Thursday to talk about the future, if there is a future or if there's not a future, to try and determine what that relationship is going to look like. So while we have a number of different initiatives on the go, comprehensive OP review, comprehensive zoning bylaw review, and the mature neighborhood study that's ongoing, we really don't have a team in place in order to make it happen.
Okay. Any questions at this point for planning or around the planning budget? Go ahead, Council Tadman.
Thank you. We're updating the official plan, correct? And I brought it to both of your attention for the meeting. There has been, something got out in the paper for applications, correct? Has that closed at this time?
I think it's, isn't it the end of March or is it closed?
Did you get enough people from the community?
Go ahead.
I'm not part of the steering committee. It's been done through with Rupert Dobbin, the project planner that we have, so I'm not aware. I know that we had another applicant come through today, but I'm not aware of how many we received.
Okay. So we, excuse me, we will move forward with that to have that a complete committee, right? Okay.
Official plan. Any other questions? Okay, so we're going to move from planning to economic and community development. Linda, anything to add to this report at all?
Nothing to add.
Okay, so I have just a comment as far as Apple Fest. We did go through council to add $10,000 to the budget to hire the, or to have a service contract with the chamber for that. So that needs to be added in yet, right?
Yes, so I'll do that right now.
Okay. And then during deliberations, we did have a representative from the Bay of Quinney the other day, and we did refer that to budgets. We'll do that during deliberations. Maybe Council Rowley, if you want to bring that up during deliberations so we can open that discussion. Okay, so any questions at this point for economic development? I believe, yeah, go ahead, Council Rowley.
Thank you. Under economic development, I see that there is $42,000 and change. I'm assuming and hoping that that is for a staff person.
I'm still having a bad day. Right? Yes, we've added part of a year for a person, six months, I believe, for economic development and community development.
So that's what the 42 is for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm pleased to at least see something in this year, and hopefully we have a body to take those dollars.
Yeah. Any other questions at this point for economic development from council? And our last is environmental services. We can go back?
I'm sorry.
I went back for Ron, so go back for you.
Thank you. I owe you at some point. Other cultural services. In 2018, there was an amount of $87,000, and then this year, that's like totally gone. Can you explain where those dollars went? Or are we losing some kind of benefit by not having that there?
No, you've added those back in at this point. Those are the grants and aid that we discussed at the last meeting. Part of the grants and aids are here, and part of them are in health services, and part of them are in policing, yeah.
So that is technically...
That's it, yes.
And since we went back...
Go ahead, Ron.
Your move. A question about, okay, Quinney Economic Development. We all feel good about them, I know. We are concerned whether we're getting the bang for the buck. When it comes to Northumberland Economic Development, I've spoken to them, and we all have, that just comes out of the Northumberland, what we pay Northumberland. Okay. And perhaps our new economic development person will be a little bit connected to them as much as they'll have to be connected to Quinney Economic Development to keep them sharp as well. And I know the deputy mayor and the mayor are on the Quinney Economic Development, and I presume...
Just the mayor.
Huh?
Just the mayor.
I thought you were, no.
Mayor, if I may, I'm the only one who shows up to that meeting all alone. And I'm not, that doesn't hurt my feelings in any way, shape or form. That's not what I'm getting at.
Just kidding.
The mayor of Quinney West shows up with two or three economic development people. The mayor of Belleville shows up, well, sometimes he doesn't even bother to come because there's so many of them there. And then, of course, Loyalist College and other partners appear as well. Like I said, that doesn't hurt my feelings in any way. I give the report I can give, which is pretty slim, as you know, with our current economic development work here in the community. But it would be my hope that council would want this new economic development person to help us out at places like QEDC, assuming if we partner with Bay of Quinney Regional Marketing Board there, and of course, to partner closely with Northumberland Economic Development as well. I think that's the important part of having an economic development person here in the community.
I agree. I think the key to this money being well-spent is having someone who knows what's happening with it and can work together with these organizations.
I think the whole key is that our interest is being heard there all the time.
Yeah. Council Tadman?
Not a question, just a statement that whatever happens in Quinney West and Belleville and Coburg is good for us because most, a lot of our people work in those other centers. So, I mean, it's a great investment, even if a new industry goes into Trenton or Belleville or Coburg.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, any other questions at this point for staff?
Sorry, this isn't budget, but just to let everybody know that Northumberland and Quinney do work close together as well. They communicate well. If there's not land, for example, available for potential business in Coburg or Port Hope or Brighton, the Northumberland people do call Mr. King at QEDC and say, "We've got a, we've got a potential decent-sized employer here. Do you guys have anything in Belleville, Trenton, or anything that you know of in Brighton that we don't?" So, you know, it's good to be in Brighton and good to be the meat in the economic development sandwich. That's what we all hope to be here at one point, so.
I prefer to be cheese, but no, it's okay. Not mayo. Okay. Enough about sandwiches. I'm getting hungry. Okay, so we've gone through all the printups as far as the budget, operating budget? Oh, have we not done? Oh, yes, we went back, sorry. Environmental Services. Any, do we have a report on that at all or comments on that? No? Any questions of council at this point? Council Tadman?
Anyways, not a question, but a statement. I think sometimes people think in the rural area that we get so much more in the urban than the rural, but this is definitely user pay, both water and sewage, and I think that message needs to get out, that we pay for this.
Yes. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions at this point for staff? Council Anderson?
We had somebody that was specifically overseeing and responsible for this, the environmental issues, and was that Lucas? Lucas was part of, was that?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's part of my department.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Well, that was sort of a question.
Do you have a sort of another question or is that it? Okay. Go ahead, Council LeBlanc.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Does the landfill fall into this environmental department? This is totally separate. Okay. When we took over, when the landfill was given to the county about 12 years ago, sold to, they gave us a fee of, I thought it was a fee, they gave us $14,000, since we're the host county. They give us $40,000 a year, they still do that?
Yes, we have a host fee agreement with Northumberland County. It's somewhere around $56,000 a year.
Because what I was thinking, when that was all done, the tipping fees were around $35 to $40 a ton. Now they're around $125. So I was just wondering if that hosting, of hosting the landfill and they're looking for an expansion, because I talked with them, even though we have a meeting, is there any way we can increase that host fee? Because if you look at some of the other hosting, just looking on the website, just different people that host landfills for different municipalities, they're getting anywhere from $300 to $1 million. And then when we were at the Roma, we got to meet in the morning for all the people that municipalities that have landfills, we're all there. I ended up by being brought to the head table to answer most of the questions. But is one of the things that we probably should look at, Mayor, and the county, of raising those fees? Because they've raised their tipping fees and we haven't raised our fee. It's always been the same.
Just a question for Linda. Does that go up every year, that amount that we receive?
It's based on the tonnage that gets put into this landfill. So it has gone up, it has gone up over the last few years. I was going to look and see if I could see what date it expires. I'm thinking the agreement is probably in its third year of five, but I could be wrong. So I can get back to council and let you know when that agreement will expire, and we can't really do much about it until that point.
Okay. Did you have a question? No? Any other questions at this point for staff regarding this? So now we're going to move into the public comments section. Anyone who has any comments, if you would like... Yep. We'll start off with Brenda Richardson at this point. External, we don't have staff members, so we're just going, we can deliberate. We'll do that during deliberations, because we don't have staff members going to comment on it. They're all just, right, they're external, so we'll do that later. Remind me later.
Good evening, your worship, Deputy Mayor and council and staff. My name is Brenda Richardson, and I live at 104 Ragland Street, Brighton. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to take another hard look at the money that the Presque Lighthouse Preservation Society is requesting from the town. My information tonight is in addition to the email that I sent out to you. The Lighthouse project posted on their Facebook site on November 20th, 2018, that it was now complete, along with a picture. In this post, it reads that $25,000 is required to do the landscaping and signage in 2019. Then, on December 21st, 2018, they posted that $10,000 was needed to do the landscaping and signage. The Presque Lighthouse Preservation Society has continued to receive a great deal of financial help through donations from many of their members and various groups, all of which have been posted on their Facebook page. October 27th, 2018, they reached 302 lifetime members who donated a minimum of $500 each. November 21st, 2018, they received 24, over 2,400 from the Pine Ridge chapter of the Ontario Building Association. December 13th, 2018, they received $20,000 from the John M. and Bernice Parent Foundation. February 1st, 2019, had a painting donated to them valued at $400 to $450 to be auctioned off. Then on March 1st, 2019, another $1,000 from a Toronto residence. On Friday, March 15th, 2019, I sent the Lighthouse Society a private message with regards, which reads, "Good morning. I was hoping you could elaborate on your landscaping plans. With so much rock around the lighthouse, grass on both sides of the sidewalk leading up to the lighthouse, this does not leave much room for change, does it? Thank you." Their response, "No, it does not. We are very limited to our space due to Ontario Parks' concerns. We hope to find space for two benches. We are working with the parks in that regard." I've attached a copy from my Messenger Facebook that I can hand in to you. Benches, two benches, they want our tax dollars to pay for two benches. So then I went to the office at the park and spoke with their staff. I was informed that Presque Park had helped them out substantially due to the fraud. They informed me that these benches have to meet with parks' strict specifications. Nothing had been agreed upon yet. I am all for supporting tourism in Brighton, but after speaking to the park staff, these benches and refurbished signage are not even a go-ahead. I know you lowered the request, but $10,000 is still a lot of money for two benches that I feel the Lighthouse Society can easily afford to pay for themselves, considering the continuous financial support reported by them on their Facebook page. I would like to see some of this money go to another group or all of it put in reserve for financial request assistance that are in greater need for help that you will receive throughout the balance of the year of 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Have a coffee? Any other citizen comments at this time? No? I have a motion moved by Council Anderson, seconded by Council Bateman, that the committee of the whole received public comments from the March 26, 2019 budget meeting. All those in favor? Okay, so we're going to move into the budget deliberations, and we can use the same sheets as we did, or the summary, which is maybe a little bit easier. The summary highlights everything on a few pages. Let's get it out for a minute. So we'll go through operating, and then we'll do external. I'm just curious at this point, before we begin, Linda, what is our overall increase to the budget right now? You've added Apple Fest, right? If you could tell us what it is now, and if you're able to also just remind us at what point we increased by a percent, how much?
Okay, so this evening, I just added the $10,000 that was approved, and we are at 8.74% tax increase. And so $81,500 is approximately a 1% tax increase. And we are at a blended rate, approximate blended rate of 5.3% currently. And that would impact, the house assessed at $250,000 in 2018, it would impact them by $161.84 for the year. If I could, though, before you get too far into deliberations, there were a few other things that we wanted to talk about that I don't want us to forget, to discuss, that we had set aside for our operating deliberations. One of them was physician recruitment. So you talked about a service agreement with the Trenton Memorial Hospital Foundation Physician Recruitment Program. And they had requested $50,000, and council had discussed $25,000 for the first year. We also discussed a little bit about there being some reserve money for physician recruitment that we could possibly put toward that program. And then currently in the budget for the committee, which doesn't really exist at this point for physician recruitment, or is not meeting currently, the amount was $2,522 total.
Could you just, so that we can be looking at that section, where would this go under in the budget? So we have an idea.
Okay, so, under Health Services.
Yes.
Which was page...
It's the third page of the big sheet.
Oh, the big sheets, okay.
We're looking at the big sheets.
I'll go to the big sheets, too. So with these two reductions that I talked about, so if you wanted to provide $25,000 and reduce your budget by $2,500 for the committee that's currently in the budget, and also use your reserves, you would be looking at an increase of $19,465 approximately. So that's something that council should be thinking about, because that's in addition to your budget, in addition to what we have currently. One of the other things that you want to discuss, so you might want to make a note, is your $18,500 for the Bay of Quinney region. And I understand that's what, $1.55 per capita, with perhaps a four-year agreement, four- or five-year agreement they're looking for, with an increase incrementally each year on that, 25 cents. So if we're committing to the 18.5, please bear in mind that you're committing to this ongoing for four years. It'll probably be a service agreement. That's my assumption, although I didn't hear the presentation.
It's a memorandum of understanding that they're looking for.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Does the 18.5 take into account the reduction of the population at Workworth?
I calculated it based on $11,892.
Which is the 2016 consensus.
Yes.
And Mr. Stevenson did say that, like the QEDC, they would be willing to remove the permanent occupants at the Workworth institution as part of our population so that we weren't paying on those. So I think whatever QEDC is using is what Bay of Quinney Regional Marketing Board would consider as well. It won't be significantly less than 18.5, but it'll be there.
So we can go on the approximate amount of 18.5 for now, knowing that it'll be a little bit less? Okay. Anything else?
One more thing. A recent announcement, the OMPF, Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, for 2019. That announcement, or that allocation notice came in very recently, and that's an increase in revenue of $50,300.
Where does...
So that is found under General Government at the very, very, very beginning of those spreadsheets, the second line. So right now, we have $1,036,500 in there, and our allocation notice is showing $1,086,800. So it's an increase of $50,300 in revenue. I'm going to add that right now to our ongoing, and then we will know where we are.
Counsel Rowley, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about the OMPF. Are those dollars, are they for any specific projects that we need to, or can we spend that where we wish? Are we stuck in a box as to what we can do with those dollars?
The OMPF is an unconditional grant.
So we've just decreased our budget by that at this point? Counsel Tadman? Uh-huh. She's blaming it on the microphone.
Blame it on me. What was the extra $50,000? It was $186?
The current allocation is $1,086,800.
$800, okay.
Go ahead.
I thought I read that this might be only a one-time thing, and then they're thinking of maybe not even having it anymore?
As some of you may know, I'm on the OMPF focus group for the province, and I sit at AMO meetings for this. The speculation was that it was actually going to start decreasing in 2019, but because the budgets... the budgets were already being approved and the province hadn't made its decision, that didn't happen this year. And I was pleased to see that we actually increased, because I thought they were holding the line on everybody's allocation notices. There's a lot of transitional funding that's built into the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. That transitional funding goes mainly to the northern communities and to rural communities. So I don't know that they could completely get rid of OMPF and not cripple municipalities. We receive $1,086,000, but I know that there's communities that receive $30 million, and that would cripple them. So the province will have to be careful on how they make these decisions going forward. The one-time funding, that you understand, maybe the new one that was just announced, it's a brand-new fund, it's unconditional. I sent an email regarding that. I believe the amount for Brighton that we're going to be receiving any day is $619,005. That staff will be having some discussions in the very near future. We're not going to include it in this year's budget as revenue, and we're not going to include any projects in this year's budget, so that we have time to think about it and bring some really sound recommendations back to council for that funding.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make, are you finished? Are those the items that we need to talk about, the extra items? Do you have an amount? And then we can continue.
I haven't added all the extra items. So what I did add was the Chamber Agreement, Service Agreement for the Applefest, and the OMPF increase in funding. And we're at 8.12% tax increase, which gives you a blended rate of approximately 5%. That's $153 for a taxpayer at $250,000 assessment.
So for every $81,000 that we add to the budget, our, not our blended rate, but our Brighton rate is going to go up 1%, correct?
That's correct. And your blended rate is going to go up about 0.45%.
Just something for us all to remember as we're adding to our wish list, that for every approximately $40,000 or so, we're going to go up a percent. No, sorry, that's double. That's the other way around.
Yeah.
Yes, so every 160 that we add, we're going to add to that total blended rate of 1%, correct?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Just a bit of a guideline while we're adding things? And think in your head where you want to end up with the increase, so. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just circling back to the two additional personnel that are in the position papers but haven't been included in the budget. That's the records management admin person for the front office. I'm a little hurt. I thought I was doing a good job at reception, but hey, whatever. And the public works foreman, or foreperson, I'm not sure how we say that in 2019, but I guess I would ask the CAO, are these two positions, positions that we would consider critical? Should we be including them in the 2019 budget? Or are these exactly the kind of things you want to be looking at moving forward that you may recommend coming out of a new organizational review and chart?
Through you, Mad Chair. That's exactly what I'm going to be looking at. I need some time to do it correctly. So I would suggest that they would not be part of the budget. And in due course, we would bring a comprehensive recommendation for council's consideration.
Okay, so just a question before we go on. Do we want to go department by department? Or do we just want to have a discussion about the things we wanted to discuss, add or subtract, and see where we end up? How are we comfortable?
Why don't we clear some of the things that we've just been discussing?
Sure.
There's about four, five key. Clear that, and then...
Okay. So the first thing was Bay of Quinney. We had, okay, do we have to have a discussion about this? All those in favor? Go ahead, Counsel Rowley. She's dying to talk about it.
I think regardless, $18,500, and as we said, we need to move on marketing what we have here in Brighton. And for $18,000, we can leverage hundreds of thousands of dollars through the Regional Marketing Board that I think we would be remiss not to add a small amount of.
Okay. I'd agree.
Oh, wait.
Counsel Tadman?
Just to remind everybody, though, that it goes up each year for four years.
Yes. So we're not just agreeing to this year, we're agreeing to four years with an increase each year. Counsel Anderson?
Okay, the only concern I have is that all their marketing and everything is in place for this year. So do we give them the money now and not see any benefit from marketing their maps?
We are going to be putting one of us on their board, and we're going to make sure that we get benefit from it.
Well, I just, because a lot of what they do has already been planned for this year. I'm just saying, perhaps it's something that, if we're going to give them money for, and want to see some results of that, it should maybe be further down the road than now. We're three, four months into this year.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we wouldn't appear on the print marketing stuff. That stuff will have been let. But we, it's easy to change the electronic marketing, the websites, the apps, the kiosks that Mr. Stevenson told us about. That stuff can be done fairly seamlessly and off-site through their own programs. So I'm confident that Brighton would see an uptick in terms of its marketing. And then, of course, next year we'll be right there for all the important print marketing stuff that goes out into the world.
Counsel Bateman?
There we go. In comparison, like if we go, what are we getting from Quinney Economic Development? And the money that's allocated that comes out of what we give to the county, some of that should be earmarked for this very thing. So what do we get from the county for that? Like, that people can see that that's what is being done? Because I agree with what everybody's saying. We want to promote. But I don't see, and we've heard that they haven't really done much for us from the county end of it. I'd like to know what they're going to do, what their plan on what they're going to do.
Yeah, I think that's an incredibly unfair statement. QEDC, both out of QEDC and out of Northumberland County, I can say exactly the same thing about both organizations. We pay for one, we write a check for one into QEDC, and of course, we all write our check to the county that pays for county economic development. Both organizations are acutely aware of Brighton's needs. Brighton in and of itself has pigeonholed its own ability to grow its industrial capacity with the smaller, and on purpose, Counsel Bateman, on purpose we've done this, our smaller units of industrial properties in the industrial park. We don't have a 10, or 12, or 20-acre industrial site. We don't have it. And in fairness, you know, I'm a bit reticent to say it out loud, but we may not want it. We may not want that plant that comes to town with 1,500 or 2,000 employees, because one day there will be a downturn in that industrial cycle, and we will be that community that loses 1,500 or 2,000 employees. It's happened in Coburg, it's happened in Belleville, we just saw it happen in Oshawa. So I am much more comfortable in a community with, you know, smaller lots that can employ 10, 20, 30 people. Because if something happens to that business, it's easy to recycle those employees, it's easy to find those employees new jobs. And QEDC and Northumberland Economic Development are well aware of those lots that are available to us, and have been working very closely with new people coming to the community, and the existing people who have said they want to buy and build properties here in Brighton. So the, both of the cannabis, potential cannabis operators, for example, have been working very closely with Northumberland County Economic Development to try to find granting opportunities and employment opportunities, and to find that mix of person available for, who they can use when they come to town and are ready to employ people. So, you know, we're not going to see the big newspaper grabbing, the newspaper headline-grabbing business come to town. So no doubt that next year and the year after that, we will all say, gee, I wonder what we're getting out of places like QEDC and Northumberland Economic Development? Well, what we're getting is promotion, and pretty heavy promotion for a community of our size, especially given the mix that both those organizations are dealing with.
Go ahead, Counsel Tadman.
And I do believe, some around this table have heard the presentations from both Coburg and Quinney Economic Development, and they do a fabulous job at promoting and working together. So I won't be supporting this other organization, because how many different people do we need to say the same thing? And we just don't have the big properties, but they're scurrying in other areas for these smaller lots, and we do have those. So I think we're doing fine as far as the two.
So I believe Bay of Quinney is a different sort of focus. It's not about filling our industrial park so much as promoting Brighton and tourism and all the offshoot of that. So it is a different organization. Do we have any other questions? Sorry.
I was just going to, I was just going to follow up. I don't disagree. I think that, it's not my statement, this is something that Counsel LeBlanc could probably attest to, this is what we were told by people in Northumberland, that they haven't focused on Brighton. I'm not saying they didn't. That's what they told me, that's why I'm just saying, what do we get? Because, do you want counsel?
We're shifting that view.
Okay. Because that's what they were saying, so that's why I was questioning it when it's coming from them.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Rowley, and then Counsel LeBlanc.
Thank you. I just want to go back to councillor Anderson's statement regarding all of the print. I believe that when Mr. Stevenson was here, he said that they were just in the throes of redoing some of their visitor guides and all of those kind of things. So I don't think we're really, really late. I think we can get into the tourist season as it is here, and it's something that we've been lacking.
Counsel LeBlanc? And then, if you can go, and then Counsel Tadman.
One of the things that the mayor, when you said about industry, large and small, there is a lot of industrial land, there are small lots. There's still another 200 acres that are sitting out there. The other thing is, our tax base is way off. So we got to track some type of industry, a large industry, if we're going to do it. Because right now, we're like 90, 95, 5. And we have a high school that we're bringing, we're educating kids to work, and we got to bring jobs in here to work. I know we got $450,000 allotted in the budget, so we can sell those lots as service lots now for electric, oil, and gas. But the thing is, I was at that meeting to, for Northumberland County to meet, I met with their economic development, and they said for three years, they wouldn't touch us. So if they can change that mindset and get them to work with us, that is beautiful. And I told them I would. I worked very closely with Chris Kay, and now I know why some of the industry, the larger industries that wanted to come here in the last two or three years were turned down with 40, 50 jobs. So, so thank you. I just want to know, we got to change that tax base. And we got to change it, we got to bring small, we got to bring big. And if they're here for a long time, somebody might utilize those buildings again. And we are bringing jobs. And why are we educating our kids if we don't want to bring jobs to town? It works hand in hand, okay? And I'm working to get jobs here, but we got to open these lots up. Thank you.
Counsel Tadman?
I just want to remind everybody that we do a pretty good job of promoting Brighton. The park draws in about 260,000 a year in tourists. And Applefest, there's no place to park because so many people come. So with the Chamber and all the different promotions that go on, I think Brighton is well-recognized. And sometimes I feel it's our own fault that we get this name of being dysfunctional, because I think we've done a lot here in Brighton, and it's growing, so people must be attracted to the area.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Counsel Bateman.
Kind of a question, general statement. If we went with the Bay of Quinney, and we're already with QEDC, they're going to promote outside, you know, Brighton, so that people know we're here, and they'd want the same from us. But is there anywhere in town that we display that information? Because we used to have at the top of the hill, the 401, I don't know if anybody's been up there. They've eliminated that. Where that used to be is now freezers. We don't, so if we do this, it's going to be a good thing. But we have to have somewhere where we're promoting the town and promoting. We don't have like a visitors booth where you pick up all that stuff. There is nowhere in town anymore.
Well, being on the DBIA, every shop owner has maps and tear-off sheets, and they would, you know, they would happily carry and promote anything in town as well. So do we have a dedicated location? We don't. That's something that I certainly would like to see happen over the next little while as well, so that's something that we can certainly bring up. And working with these groups like the DBIA and the Chamber, we can make that happen again. So I think it's just like a first step towards getting to where we need to be. Sorry, Counsel Anderson, and then Counsel LeBlanc?
Yeah, I think we're missing the fact that the Chamber is here in Brighton again. And they, I was speaking to them this week, this past week, and I have a meeting coming up with them this week. They have their own committee meeting. And on their agenda is tourism and what they're going to do. They do have tourism kiosks, and I think there's three of them. And I'm not sure exactly where they are yet, but I asked that question. And so, they might not be open this time here, but they, actually, the park, they even have a spot down there, too. So I think the Chamber will be the one that we may want to count on, being a tourism driver and work with Quinney as well. So they should probably be on their board as well.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Yes. The word I brought was, I picked up a couple of their brochures, and we read them, and Mark had one, I had one, I would have brought it here tonight. When you looked at all the businesses they were advertising for, in both brochures, there was not one from Brighton. They were all from outside of Brighton that they were advertising for.
Was that the Chamber? Because we haven't, they were paid to do work like that for Crammy, not for Brighton. So if we don't pay them, they're not going to promote Brighton. That's the way it works. So...
Well, they had the brochure, but they weren't promoting Brighton. I'll tell you that.
We didn't pay for it. Any other, so we're discussing Bay of Quinney, whether we're going to add the 18.50 in, or, sorry, yeah, $18,500 approximately, and we just need a majority to, go ahead, Linda.
So based on the QEDC numbers for population, it would actually be closer to $17,412.
$17,412.
And 6 cents.
Approximately.
Approximately.
$17,400. Okay, so 17,400. Go ahead, Mayor, and then Counsel Rowley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I'm sure we could, or the person who would represent Brighton at the Bay of Quinney Regional Marketing Board would want to encourage the Bay of Quinney to have a kiosk somewhere here in Brighton. I would perhaps suggest the lobby of the library, once the front doors get open, it would be a nice place for tourists to come and put their fingers on the iPad, or whatever it is, and find out what we can do here in Brighton, and what they can do in the Greater Bay of Quinney region. So my hope is that, I'm hopeful the council will agree to spend the $17,400, and we can be, we can renew that partnership.
Counsel Rowley?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is kind of looking into the three-year future, Linda, using those numbers at $2.30, which would be the 25 cent increase for the three years. What would be our max out then, three years, four years from now?
$25,840.
Okay, so are we ready to make a decision on this? Just a show of hands as far as if anyone's in favor? So that's four. Okay, so we'll be adding that into the budget. And the next one was physician recruitment at $25,000?
$19,500.
Oh, $19,500, I guess, yes. Because we're removing the committee. Does everyone get that? Go ahead, Counsel Tadman.
This does go off. I'm not doing this. Anyways, I just wanted to say that I fully would support this, and it looks even better at 19,465. And that's with the 2,500 and about $6,000 that we had in reserve, for the physician recruitment, right?
$3,000 from reserves.
Oh, okay.
And 2,500 from the current budget.
Okay. But we will have, my understanding was, we will have somebody from our municipality plus a councillor sit on that committee?
That is their question.
Yes, that's what I thought. Okay, yes, I would fully support that.
That was at 50. Is it the same at 20?
We'll have to have those discussions, but I'm sure they'll allow at least one representative.
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well.
Any other comments or discussion on this? Are we all in favor of it? Is it something we want to move forward with? Go ahead, Counsel Tadman. Did you want to?
Do I agree with you?
Okay. Everyone in favor of this one? We have... Okay. Everyone in favor of this one? We have majority in favor. Okay. So we're gonna add that to the budget, $19, or whatever that number is. Okay. So what other item did we need to discuss? Add which? $50,000? Yeah, that's not a discussion item. Those are the three items. Was there anything else? Okay. So overall, are we satisfied with the operating budget? Counselor Anderson? No? Overall, are we satisfied with the operating budget? Can we move on to the external budgets at this point? Again, we're going to have a second draft.
We're gonna talk IT.
Counselor Rowley, did you have a question?
I do have a question. And I guess it comes under operations. And it has to do as well, Counselor Anderson and I, when we spoke at our Northumberland County Open House and the concerns we have here with IT and the fact that we could get support from the county at X dollars an hour for so many hours. Counselor Anderson and I thought it would be probably something that we should bring to the table. And I guess at operations, that is the time to bring that. So we were wondering if the committee would be open to discussing that we do that. I think at the time, the county said, Counselor Anderson, $67 an hour or something to get someone. We wouldn't need somebody full-time, but someone to cut $67. Seven bucks, I can do it. So we were just wondering, we were talking earlier, if the committee would be open into having a discussion around the-
Sure. Linda, do we have anything in the budget for IT?
Yes. So we do have external IT support right now. We need more in-house support. We need somebody that can connect computers and do the minor stuff, which could be a person in our building one day a week, one day every two weeks. So I think that that is, and perhaps the CAO could chime in here too. But that is more of an operational RFP type of thing that we would have to do. First of all, we need to do it anyway. So whether it's the county that's successful at the end of the day or another external IT firm that's successful at the end of the day, we don't know that until we let in RFP.
But we do have money in the budget already for IT. We don't need to add something at this point. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I'm supportive of the concept that Counselor Rowley's brought up in terms of shared services with the county for a number of reasons, not the least of which is the more we can say to groups like Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, hey, look at all the shared services we're doing with our partners at the county and our partners at Crammy and our partners at Quinney, the less likely they are to come down and say, we need to reorganize the county system and we need to take a look at amalgamations again here at Northumberland County. The more we can do to avoid that kind of microscope look here at Brighton, here at Northumberland County, the better off we'll be. And I mentioned this to the CAO today, that it's my hope that staff will continue to look into those levels of shared services, whether it be, like I say, at the county or between municipalities or across the border at Quinney. Specifically for that reason, we want to be able to say to Municipal Affairs and Housing, we do this all the time. We don't need you to tell us that we need to do it more because we're really good at it. So my hope is that, you know, I don't know if we need, I don't think we need to change the budget, operational budget line item today. I think we, my hope would be that we would see our staff embrace the shared service through the county and that we would see what those savings look like in 2020 for the next budget. That would be my anticipation.
Counselor Tadman?
This was offered before and it was turned down by a former council coming from the county. And I thought at the time it was an excellent idea and I certainly would fully support it. But I think this is another thing that our CAO will look into because it'll be shared across all departments. So that's something I don't think we even need to consider at this point since we got money here.
Counselor Anderson?
Counselor Rowley, am I not correct, our discussion was, they have a person that isn't doing it totally full-time, that lives in our community. They are willing to share, but they're not going to administer this. It's something, a person that's available, and most of us all know that person, but I don't want to put their name out there. And they could come in and do certain functions and get us up and going. I didn't realize we had a contract, but that could be a conflict there for that, having somebody else come in under that contract. But also, we talked about getting, streaming of council, getting some equipment, getting, you know, and none of that's been budgeted. If it is something, even if it's $1,000 for a camera or whatever it was.
Been budgeted.
Has it been budgeted? Okay. So, but that's what this discussion's about, to make sure if, but this person could come in and do those smaller tasks and be available, perhaps one day a week if needed. But it wouldn't be the county, I think we were going maybe the wrong direction there. I don't think the county would be coming in and managing that person or organizing that person. They'd be directly working for us on a different contract, I guess. Okay. Well, that's-
Right. So we're discussing the budget, not doing the hiring, right? So we just need to move on. Go ahead, Counselor Tadman. Did you have a comment regarding?
No, you just took the words out of my mouth. I think that it's something that we don't need to discuss right now. That's operational with the CAO and directors.
So at this point, is there anything else we want to add to or take away from this operating budget before we move on to external? Counselor LeBlanc?
On this operating budget, I'm through you, Deputy Mayor, to pass Preston. Is this operating budget also has to do with rural?
Yes, this is an inclusive budget of the entire municipality.
And when I read this, I saw that we have $60,000 for brushing.
That's correct.
Yeah. And the rural doesn't get very much. And the thing is, we're far behind on brushing. I would like to see brushing and another $60,000 to it. So you would have a group start east and west and come in because we have pop of trees and trees, you're just gonna go over here, that have been growing in the ditches for the last 12 or 15 years. The machinery we bought basically can't cut those big trees, so you end up with stubs that are three or four feet high. So if we're gonna go brush it and it hasn't been done for a long while, you start east and west and meet in the middle within about three years. You could do more. And I'm just asking, I'm asking that because to be looked at seriously.
Yes, I understand. And I do believe we have maybe not, anything that we haven't done over the last number of years, has it not been that money put in reserve because we have not done it all or not? Am I wrong?
That would be a question for the Director of Finance.
Yes. So any surplus that we achieve through our budgets in prior years goes to the contingency reserve. So we have a substantial contingency reserve, somewhere north of $1 million. And if we want to enhance brushing or ditching programs, that would be a good place to get the money from. Because the taxpayers paid that money for those services. And since we didn't get the work done, that's where the money's sitting for those services now.
So just so we have the process right, we don't, do we need to increase the budget and pull from reserves in order to do that? Okay.
Yes, that would be appropriate.
So does that make sense, Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, yes. Because I sat on the committee and this was one of the things that were, was the brushing. Because once you get the brushing, then you can get into the ditching and solve a lot of these drainage problems that they have.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So I have a couple of comments. A couple of years ago, we added something like $100,000 to the budget for brushing and ditching. And because we didn't have the staffing levels, we couldn't get it done. So we can add all the money in the world to the budget because it's just sitting in people's pockets. But at the end of the day, do we have the staff? If we were to increase it more than $60,000, do we have the staff to manage that process? No. No, I think the Director needs to answer that.
Because this is strictly a contracted service, it only puts a minimal strain on the supervisory staff.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
So one more question, if I may? So on the brushing and ditching issue, all of these rural roads that we will be looking at this year, they also include a brushing and ditching component to their contract. Is that true?
For the surface treatment?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
So anything we add would be over and above these 18 or so roads that I'm looking at on the capital budget?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So Counselor LeBlanc, do you have an amount that you propose to add?
I would just like to match the $60,000. So that you start east and west and you come meet in the middle. So you'd see something that, and this is what we discussed in the rural committee too.
So an additional $60,000 to come out of reserves. Does everyone understand that? Is everyone okay with that? Do you have a comment?
I do, just as long as we understand that we're adding money to the operational budget, but that as council, we don't get to decide where that brushing and ditching will happen. It will happen based on how the Director and his staff feel the need is, right? So, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Tadman?
And I think the rural people should be encouraged to know that we're doing a lot of roads. And we're also, we're getting a new grader. And I think they're gonna see a great improvement on the roads that need to be graded, plus the ditching. And so hopefully, you'll be able to report that, Counselor, that they're well taken care of.
Everyone in agreement? So a show of hands for agreement of this. Yeah, go ahead. So if we can add that. Anything else to the operating budget and then we'll move on.
Since this is a discussion period, some of the residents, we did loss in Sediment Road last year. And another road we did, we resurfaced last year. And if you go drive on them now, there's potholes through the center. And it's like going on a corduroy road, just like, like this. So this is through you to him. Is there any type of agreement that we have? Or we can go back and get them to come back? Because those years, those roads aren't even a year old. And I see that you've got them back here than here.
My understanding at this time is that the county did do the surface treatment on those two roads. And we had an external contractor prepare them. My understanding of the arrangement that we have with the county is that there is no warranty. So we have no fail-safe to go back on anything that could be a quality or workmanship-related issue at this point in time.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So on a go-forward basis, what is Brighton's plan?
My current plan is to try to work with them to get a better quality. They are sending a couple of operators and a supervisor down into the states to be trained on surface treatment. The relationship with the county, using them as a contractor, is new to me. I'm used to that being a contracted service, so you have bonding, you have insurances in place that, you know, you have measures you can use to utilize warranty and future quality of works. So my plan is to use the county again this year. Hopefully, together, we can increase and improve the quality of what we're doing between preparing the bases ourselves and knowing exactly what's there, ensuring the comp actions in place, and to make sure that the quality and workmanship that they do on the surface treatment layer is there so that we get the expected life.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, the bonding that they use for the rocks that they put on, because the rock surfaces are all going into the ditch now. They didn't even last a year. So if you can look at that, I greatly appreciate it and what can be done. Because I have a few complaints. That's why I drove the road. Okay?
Okay. Any more questions about the operational budget or comments? Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So with regard to the surface treatment and the cost, I mean, the reason we use the county is we've been told it's significantly cheaper and we have had that exercise performed for us. So we do know that there is significant cost savings by using the county. And I can't tell you what those numbers are off the top of my head, but I remember Mr. Kelly doing that for us, that process for us a year ago or maybe two years ago. That said, and my speech about shared services aside, we need to be making sure we're getting the best bang for the buck for the municipal taxpayer when it comes to service treatment. So if it's your intention to use the county, I'm happy with that. That is an operational decision and it's yours to make. But I want to make sure that somehow, some way, we have some level of guarantee even through the county. It's not appropriate for any service contractor, regardless of who it is, another level of government or not, to providing that service to the municipality and not backing up their work. I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor, actually Bateman first and then Anderson.
Just a question on the sidewalk expenditures, $118, 625.
How much sidewalk does that entail?
The 2019 number I believe you're referring to is $112.
Okay.
And that's all maintenance related, right, for the patching? That will be all of our location repairs and trip hazard shaving down and elimination, if you will.
So that's not new sidewalk? Because that would be capital. This is repairs. Right?
And if I may, just to help Preston out just a bit, last year, our contracted work for our sidewalk maintenance was $80,000. And this year, Preston has increased it to $120,000. But we're also pulling $40,000 from the contingency reserve to balance that out a bit, just so that you're aware.
Okay. Any other changes to operational? Okay. So Linda, do you have an idea of where we're at at this point? Or we can do external and then you can let us know where we're at? Is that okay? Okay. So back of the binder is external. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I mean, we can very quickly go through the external budget because, you know, the Police Services Board is the $3,000 for the committee to meet. The OPP contract is assigned to us. Quinney Access is something we agree to and is levy to us. I think that budget is now settled, is it not? Or on its way, I think. Yeah. Lower Trent is passed and we are members of the Lower Trent Conservation Authority. We can make decisions around that. However, we would need to seriously ramp up our staffing levels in order to take on the real roles and responsibilities of Lower Trent. So I think for this year anyway, we're at $156,000. QEDC, again, we've agreed to and that's a levy that's been passed. And the DBIA is a budget that is pre-tax. So the DBIA actually gets the tax money directly. So really, the only one to look at is the library board. That was a very long way of saying that. I apologize.
That's exactly what I was going to say. There's not a whole lot of discussion here because a lot of these are just items that we have to agree to. And do we want to discuss the library board? Is there anything, any questions about the library board that, coming from council? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just gonna say that the increase that we're seeing year over year is exactly what we would anticipate, given the staffing levels that they need to do to increase because of the square footage we've given them to provide programming space for. This is not a surprise. The library board told us this was going to happen over time as they got their staffing levels up to speed. A half-million-dollar library budget in a community of our size really is not something we should be blocking out.
Any other comments, questions from council? Go ahead. Counselor Tadman?
I totally agree with what the mayor is saying. And I think the community is very pleased with the new accommodations, the space. I think the one thing that puzzles some people is we provide staff out at Codrington and it's not very well utilized. And I don't know how we encourage the rural people to use that. Because sometimes, well, as you know, the users out there, it's so low that it hardly warrants having a person go out and sit there all morning. But other than that, it's increasing everywhere else, in all areas of the library.
Perhaps we can promote here that there's a library out there. Maybe people don't understand or know.
Yeah, it could very well be that they just don't know that they can go there to get books. that they can go there to get books.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
I had the privilege of being there this morning for their breakfast. And it was fantastic. And that was the first thing on their list of discussion this morning after giving out their prizes was they've been... They said there was a threat of closing the Codrington Library. No, I'm just going to bring it... You brought it up about the usage. And they said if they didn't start using it more, they were told that they were going to lose it. And they were also told to get... Bring their books back. And they announced this to eighty, ninety people in the room. And they all went, whoa. So, I just want to make it clear then that it's not... The one thing that I noticed when I went in into that library was it's small, and there was a lot of books. And...
It's a library.
But there's nothing else. There's nothing else there. They don't have computers. They don't have... Why isn't... With the internet issues and all that, why isn't there something that would be more of a draw for that?
Where would you put them?
What's that?
Where would you put them in that small space?
I would remove some of the books and put a computer in there or two. But I'm just saying, if you're trying to stimulate something to be used... I know you want to move things along. But sometimes, people, like this morning, were very concerned about it. So, I told them I would come. And if it was brought up, and which it was, I'd ask the question.
Okay. Any other comments about the budget we have in front of us concerning the library?
Yes, this is concerning the library. There was no discussion of eliminating the Codrington Library. And I'm sure the mayor's been around long enough to know on the library. But that... I don't know where that came from, but that is not fact. It's just we're trying to get them to use it more. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments about this budget that we're talking about?
Yes, it's about this budget we're talking about. I do have another question later that's not about this, but it can wait for later. Could I just have an explanation of the line item, municipality of Brighton Space and Services? In the library, there is one under revenue and one under expense. It comes out the same. It went up from thirty-five thousand to one hundred thousand. I just don't understand what it means. Thank you.
Do you know where it is?
I do.
So, about three, four, we're drawing down?
That is the space. That is the allocation for the space that... And it increased, so, yes.
So, it's the allocation for the space?
And it's an in and out on their budget. And it's a revenue and expenditure on the municipal side as well.
So, it's an allocation for the space used? The theory being that one day, the library may have its own building that it would then have to cover the cost for. So, in their budget, they put an in and an out for a hundred thousand dollars based on the new size of the space. That's why it went from thirty-five to one hundred.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns about the external budgets? Are we able to approve them, move on? Okay. Linda, did you have an idea where we're at right now?
So, right now, we're at an eight point five seven percent tax increase. Blended, that is five point two two percent. One hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents per year increase. I'm wondering at this point, Deputy Mayor, if maybe there could be some discussion about where council feels comfortable, perhaps at the blended rate, to roll this out to the community? So that we, when we bring back a second draft, we can look for savings or look for other funding mechanisms to reduce your budget? Bearing in mind that tax rate stabilization is not generally what we use reserves for. But if we are doing extra work in the budget, and off the top of my head, I'm thinking about our official plan and our comprehensive zoning bylaw. And perhaps because these are partially funded from reserves that we've been putting away and have not had the time to really save for that yet, that perhaps we use some of our contingency reserve to help bridge that gap for those projects? Because we are doing a trifecta this year. There's three big plans being done in the planning department. And I don't think you'll see that happen again in the near future. So, that might... We have some ideas on ways that we can whittle it a bit. But we kind of like to know where council's mindset is on where you want to be.
Okay, so, that's a good question. We're at five point two two. That's an increase. What... Do we know what the increase was last year? What's our normal increase? About two? Yeah.
We look for it to be... Council in the past has looked for it to be at about three percent blended.
Blended. So, maybe just around, you know, the council... I'd like to see us at five, if we could be. But we certainly can... And I'd like to see what everyone has to say about that. I don't know if you've got a comment there, Mayor? And it'll go around.
Mine, go ahead. I think if there's a year to sort of bump things up and get us where we need to be from a taxation-level point of view, this is the year to do it. And I don't have a really great sense of what would be acceptable or what wouldn't be. But I think five percent just makes a nice even-rounded number for me from a blended rate. It would provide us with about an eight point four-ish, eight point one, eight point two percent municipal increase. But I would also float, again, my concept of a one percent municipal levy, local levy for infrastructure capital reserve. And just float that out there, see where she goes.
Okay, so...
That would be in addition to.
I'm just going to start with Councilor LeBlanc. Go around. Do you have any?
Well, I got one question through you, Deputy Mayor, just to the...
Yeah, go ahead.
To find Linda. At the rate we are, how much money are we raising in taxes? For that one year? Let's say we do the eight points something.
Where we currently are, it would be eight million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. And how much of that is from last year to this year? How much are we raising it by? All part.
Nine hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay. And one more question. How much are we sitting in reserve? Ten million?
Just a little more than ten million dollars.
So, to get us through this gap, if we threw... If we took four point five, four hundred and fifty thousand and threw it in, what would that bring us to? If we took it out of reserve and just threw it in to make up the gap for taxes?
Four hundred and fifty thousand from reserves would take you down to a three point zero five percent tax increase, which would take you to two point six three percent blended.
Okay. That's fine. Good answer. Now, I'm going to go to your one percent. I'm in the public, and I go out for breakfast with a lot of people. That one percent didn't go over very well with the people that I hang around with. And they say we pay enough taxes, and some people are hurting, and elderly people are hurting. But I also know this is the year that we got to do a lot. We've been kicking the can too far down the road. And we got to get the staff in place for everybody. If they want service, because I've told them all, if you're complaining to me about service, don't complain that your taxes are going to lie. Because we got to have the service because we're still at the staffing level of seventy-eight thousand people. So, we got to bring us up. And also, somehow, we got to get the taxes up, too. I don't want to be like Krabby that just announced twelve thousand... Twelve... I mean, twelve percent increase, right, overall? But they had no increase for four years. So, I'm happy with that five somewhere in there. And we could also take a little bit from reserve to compensate for it, to help out on the taxing. So... But I'm in a different boat at most. Hundred and forty-four, hundred and forty-five dollars. You know, I can give you that any day. Thank you.
Councilor Tadman?
Well, I'm in a different bracket than, by far. And I pay a lot of taxes. And everybody says, well, you got waterfront. But I don't know that I get a lot of services out of that water. But anyways, I think with the official plan, it's not just for one year. How many times do we have to update it? Every seven? Is it five? And the other two that you're talking about, they don't really just happen one year. And I don't think the taxpayers should have to pay all in one year. That's why I'd like to go back to reserves. And we have the reserves there to help offset some of this. I would be happy... Good point that I think that you made, Councilor LeBlanc, that people are struggling. There's a lot of people that are struggling to meet their taxes now. And I could see us at that two point six three by borrowing from some reserves. That's what we put away money for. And what was it? Four hundred thousand that you asked? Four fifty? I would... I could even, as much as it hurts me to say this because I know the people that are suffering, trying to get enough to get food on the table, never mind pay their taxes. I could go even up to three, but not... Definitely not up to five percent.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Riley?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess I'm of the mindset, you get what you pay for. In the last few years, we've been running behind. And we've been running a lot behind. When I look at our reserve sheet, we've already taken three hundred thousand dollars out for this year, based on what I'm reading, right? If I'm reading this correctly, we've already taken out three hundred thousand. Two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars transferred in as of the end of January two thousand... Or December eighteen. Six hundred and forty-four, five nine one out, if I read the totals. So, if I understand that, that's about three hundred thousand that we've already taken out of reserves. If we keep... If we take another four hundred thousand out of reserves, there isn't going to be a lot left for another dry year or another rainy year. And as I said, I think over the last several years, we've been... Which page are you looking at? I'm looking at this page here where it says three million. Well, there's other pages, but they're probably already set aside. However, I'm happy at five percent. Like I said, the last few years, we've been running far behind us. Infrastructure and all of those needs. We want improvements. We have to pay for them somehow.
Councilor Anderson, your thoughts?
I said at the beginning of the budget planning and all that, that reserves will be where. I was going to put my thoughts to. And I agree with Councilor... All three of you over there today, that we need to get on... That money was put in those reserves from the people, from the past, not so much the future, right? There's a lot of money there. And it's not just digging into a pocket full of money. It's... Things have to get done. And I agree, I think five percent may be a little push for some people. I would say if we've taken three out, we should be able to take another four out and keep it to within that target that you're... Both of you are talking about, and get some of the work done. But I think the reserve is the key way to try to resolve this and get some things done. I understand we can borrow from the reserve, right? And you want to explain that? Again, I know I've asked you about it earlier, how the interest rates and those type of things would offset each other?
So, the municipality, over a number of years, has used our reserves as our debt leverage for purchasing equipment, floating the costs of road reconstruction throughout a year until we fund it in the following year, once it's complete. So, our bank interest rate is quite low. And our money sits in the bank. And we could invest that money and perhaps get a little higher interest rate. But probably not as much as we would have to pay out in debt payments percentage-wise. So, what the municipality's done is we've borrowed internally, and then we repay those reserves, including interest annually for the equipment or whatever the project might be. It allows us to be more flexible with our payments. It allows us to pay a really low interest rate in borrowing. It allows us to replenish our reserves, so we're not just using them up and then that's it. So, there are some benefits to it. I'm sure that there are probably some negatives in some respects. But I think that the benefits outweigh what those negatives may be. And the program's worked for us. So, to phase away from that program would be a long-term plan that we have to perhaps start looking at. So, when I hear, and I've heard it from everybody tonight, so I just want to remind council that these reserves are being set aside for certain things. The only reserve that's not being set aside for a project by a department is that contingency reserve. That's your surpluses that have been transferred in. That's one million dollars. So, it's really, I think, premature for this council at this point without having all of our staffing in place and being able to present to you a ten-year long-term plan for capital and an operational plan forecasting out into the future, to know how these reserves might be better utilized rather than just saying, let's just use our reserves for tax rate stabilization. That is probably putting the cart before the horse. And I would remind council that. And I've said that a number of times in this budget process. We should be using that contingency reserve for projects that we've set... That we didn't complete in the past, that we're going to add to enhance. But when council's asking staff to bring budgets forward, and we're increasing our staffing levels to improve service delivery, there's a cost to that. And when we're enhancing or adding projects, there's a cost to that. When we want to do more sidewalks, there's a cost to that. When we want to add tourism or physician recruitment, there's a cost to that. Everything that you add to the budget and everything that we've put in the budget has to be paid for by the taxpayers somehow. And so, that's why I'm asking for council, as a consensus, to just give us some sort of... Knowing that we've added all these new things, new positions. Remember, the org chart changed recently in this term of council. We have to pay for that. And so, this year is a building step. And we're not getting all the way there. You're only paying for portions of those wages this year. Next year, you're going to be paying another portion of those wages. If you use your reserves now for tax rate stabilization, what do you do next year? And so, these are the things that we have to think about and get long-term planning in place and have something that all of council can get behind and support and relay to our taxpayers that we are improving services. We're doing what you've asked us to do. You elected us. You want potholes repaired. You want more services. You want your doctors. You want tourism. You want economic development. You want all of these things. But it comes at a cost. And Brighton has held back the tax rates. We actually fell from third lowest in the county to second lowest in the county. And because of that, we are losing ground on what our tax revenue should be. So, should you get there from zero to sixty this year? Absolutely not. But we have to make some ground somewhere, somehow. And so, that's my recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bateman?
Thank you. I'll start by saying I agree with Councilor LeBlanc, Councilor Tadman, Councilor Riley, and Councilor Anderson. I'm going to take it from maybe a slightly different approach. We live in a very diverse community. And we're all in different tax brackets, almost every single person. So, you know, fast forward, I would lean towards somewhere between the three and three point five because what one person thinks is okay would really significantly impact somebody else. And we have to think of the greater good.
impact somebody else. And we have to think of the greater good. We're speaking for 12,000 people almost, so what's really good for one might not be really good for the other. And I agree with the Director of Finance, I like to see a long-term plan before you start grabbing money everywhere. But also, there is a cost to doing those services, but there's also a cost to not doing them, so we have to plan. If we do them, it's gonna cost. If we don't do them, it's gonna cost us as well. So I agree, but we plan, then do it, because either way, it's gonna be a cost. And the, the negative impact is far greater than the positive impact. We just have to plan for that positive impact.
Okay, so the bottom line here is that we're at approximately 5. If we want to be at less than 5, we either have to cut items or we borrow from reserves. We were told we have about a million in reserves that can be used for this, um, but we don't wanna use all of the reserves. So that's really, are we going to cut or are we going to draw from reserve? Those are the questions really that we have. Counselor Tadman, did you have a comment?
Yes, and as much as I would like to see more new sidewalks, I know the ones where we're doing the streets, they automatically go as part of it. But we have such a need to fix the sidewalks we got. And it's like this building, which I needed to bring up again, because we haven't put that in the budget. Um, I would almost recommend that this year alone, not, and in future, maybe not build more sidewalks until we get caught up with it. It's, it's like your house, you know, you don't go on a holiday when your roof is leaking. You don't put new sidewalks in when you can't maintain the old ones. So what was it we had in for sidewalks, other than the, the complete re, rebuild of a street?
Uh, there is no new sidewalks. The complete 120,000 is to go towards existing sidewalk deficiencies.
That's all?
That's it.
Yeah. And how much for the repair of, of the ones that are so badly in need? What do we have for that?
That's part of the 120,000.
Really?
Yeah, so just to expand on that a little bit, every year, every 12 months, we have to do a minimum maintenance standard check of our sidewalks. Um, we just built a device to check for trip hazards, because the, the standard is 20 millimeters. Anything greater than that is a trip hazard. So in the next day or so, staff will be walking the sidewalks to determine the locations of trip hazards, uh, any low spots like in front of the stores downtown, where there's large gaps, or there's, there's, it's tilted the wrong way and it's draining towards the building. That's what we're gonna target, and that's what we're gonna try to address. To be quite honest, I don't know if the 120,000 is gonna be enough.
Okay.
But we'll have to address that time. When I have the actual data, we'll tender it, we'll have a price, and then we'll have to go from there on how best to...
And we need to do it, because we keep marking them every year and nothing gets done.
Okay, so that's in the budget?
Yeah, just a minute, just so I can elaborate on that, please. We have 933,917, so 934 really in urban infrastructure. And, uh, could we not do a little bit of pencil sharpening in that area, because that's urban sidewalks?
So your urban infrastructure reserve fund came from your sale of your PUC and Hydro back in, before amalgamation?
Yeah, before amalgamation.
Um, and so that money is earmarked for spending in any urban project?
Right.
Um, and you may use some of that for anything urban, like it's totally at council's discretion how you use that reserve fund. Um, you can also borrow against that reserve fund, as we've done many, many times, and, um, and leave the reserve fund intact. Um, again, at council's discretion.
Okay, so I know we have a few other questions. What I wanna suggest, like I said, is that we have a second draft meeting, so that we have time to discuss these things fully and get to a point where we wanna be. I think what I've heard is that we wanna end up anywhere between 3 and 5, and we need to figure out ways to do that. So we need to all think about what we wanna do, um, to get there and have that discussion. So we've got a few more comments, and then we're going to wrap it up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I would suggest we come up with a number and tell staff what that number is.
But we're not in agreement.
Well, so let's throw a motion on the floor.
Okay.
And, uh, we can hammer that out. I mean, I'd like to sort of have a general sense, um, but I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna move that staff be directed to come back with options that would give a blended rate of 5%.
Okay.
Anybody speak? Well...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I don't wanna kick the can down the road anymore. And the thing is, 5%, 4.5% up there.
Okay. Anyone else wanna make a comment on this motion before we vote on it? Go ahead.
Are we asking staff to reduce the budget if they have to?
Options.
What staff will do, will bring, bring back options that get us to 5%. That, that might look like half a percent from some budget. It might look like borrowing for something. It might look like using reserves for something. But they'll provide us with uh, 3 or 4 or 5 or however many options they deem appropriate for council to make a decision on. And we can take one or parse some.
I just don't wanna detract from getting the job done this year.
Counselor Tadman?
The blended rate before any, any money was put towards looking after this building, um, was 5.22. And you're suggesting just reduce it by .22 then, or .23? And then we'd be done in the budget?
Well, what staff would do would bring back options for us to get there, but then we'd be done the budget.
But we would be there.
We would be there.
We'd be there already, right now.
Essentially, we're, we're, we're .22% away from my suggestion, yeah.
Okay, so the motion I have, did you, are we ready to vote on this? Go ahead, Counselor Bateman.
Sure, I said all I need to say.
So if we went with the 5% and the, Preston said there was no new sidewalks. I think that's what the, when can we get it on the floor to new sidewalks? Because one area that I know we do need new sidewalks, I don't know if anybody agrees, is walking to the school in Smithfield. I've been up there when it was ice on the road, snow on the road. If you go up now, there is nowhere to walk. There's the signs that say, you know, children walking, but there's not even a marked crosswalk to that school. I don't even know if that meets legislation, let alone it's obviously not safe. There's not even painted lines. There's no marked out spot for those kids to cross. And there was a child hit there last September. So, I don't know, where is our liability? Does it beat standards? I have no idea. I'm not an expert on it. Like, I would think they'd at least have to have paint on the pavement, something.
This was brought up at a previous meeting, I think. Uh, I looked at it, it's a 58-meter section, and it would be a new sidewalk. I would have to confirm that we own enough property there to install the sidewalk, uh, but it's 58 meters from the existing sidewalk to the school. Now, building the sidewalk is one thing, maintaining it in the winter is another. That's a service, even with the two part-time people that are, uh, have increased to, for those shared positions and the new sidewalk machine. I am not gonna have the manpower or equipment to maintain that sidewalk to the standard it needs to be. So that's a service that we would have to contract out in order to maintain that sidewalk all winter.
Just, who maintains the sidewalk on Smith Street now?
We do summer maintenance and repairs, but there is no winter maintenance on that sidewalk.
Ron does. The resident shovel.
Thank you very much.
We'll give him a raise. No, keep doing it.
Do you have a question?
I just, I, this was looked at before, and I think it's a problem because of what we own and what the, what the people living there, they're almost, their, their property is more than what we need. Like, we don't have enough to make a sidewalk on the road, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
It's true. It's been looked at before.
Okay, so perhaps we might need to look at it again this year, um, but perhaps not for this budget, is what we're, I mean, we don't, at this point, we don't have a report.
Well, just to estimate previous expenses that we paid for sidewalks, I would estimate that would be in the neighborhood of 18 to 20,000 dollars to install that sidewalk. That does not include any winter maintenance.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor, um, and it's moved by Mayor Ostrander and seconded by Counselor Rowley, that staff be directed to come back with options of a blended rate of 5%. Um, are we ready to vote on this? Counselor Tadman?
One comment. It has been said again this evening that we didn't do anything in the last 48 years, and we did plenty, and it's listed at the front of this budget. It would pay everybody to take a few minutes to see. We did a lot of work.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
I, I, I just wanna recommunicate. I didn't say you didn't do anything, but I just said that I think we fell short on a few things and that we're getting behind the curve. Um, I also want to compliment Linda on the comments that she made earlier, because it does make it a little bit more clear for some of us who are maybe in a bit of a confused state as to what they are. Linda, um, thank you for your report.
Thank you. So I'm gonna call this, uh, can I call the vote? Counselor Bateman?
I'm so sorry. It's more of a comment. Um, I'm good with this as, and I have complete confidence in the staff once they get up. But whenever you take more money from some people, we are gonna have to make sure that we all do, not just staff, that we do what we're supposed to do. Because people, when they pay for something, they're gonna wanna see what they're paying for. So we can take more money, but if they don't see what they receive for that money, there's not gonna be a lot of happy people in the town. So we have to really make sure that we, if we all vote on this, we support it inside, outside, and everybody pulls their weight and we show what we get done.
Okay, thank you.
My last comment, anyway. Um, absolutely. Regardless of whether we support this motion, if, if, you know, as a member of council, if council votes in favor of this, we support council and we'll, we'll, we'll get behind each other and make sure that happens. Um, last year, the Consumer Price Index was about 2.2%, and that, that's certainly what's been reported. The Construction Price Index, which is what impacts, mostly what impacts organizations like Brighton, was 6.2%. And I think that's an important number to bear in mind as we move forward, that although, yes, our, our average ratepayer was impacted by about 2.2, our, our corporation, the corporation that we are responsible for, was impacted by 6.2% um, on those costs year over year. So, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but the money has to come from somewhere. And in a, in a tax-based organization like the municipality of Brighton, it comes from my pocket and your pocket. Um, but you're absolutely right, Counselor Bateman. Um, people expect a certain level of service, and it is my expectation that when we get back up to speed in terms of our taxation levels, that staff will recognize their responsibility is to get us back up to speed with the service levels. And I, I, I am confident that our staff knows that. 100%.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote. Do I need to read the motion again? No. All those in favor? That's carried. Okay, question period. Are there any, um, people here that would like to ask a question? You can come on forward. Brenda, you can go first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is for Ms. Winifield. Um, you stated that on the, basing on a average home price of 250,000, that the, their taxes would increase at 16184. I really don't know where we can buy a house in Brighton anymore for 250,000. Uh, one just went up, two doors down from me, is 22 years old, 499. Could you not raise that? Like, change that figure? Like, that's giving everybody a rather unrealistic as to what our tax increase would be. Like, I think it should be at least 350, 375, to, to, to give us an idea of what our taxes would increase.
Go ahead, Linda. Sure. So we try to use a round number, you know, then you can just multiply up. Um, the average weighted assessment per household in Brighton, uh, according to the OMPF document, is 291,512. I could use 291,512. I could use 300,000. I could use 290. I just use 250 because it's something that we just round. Um, so if your house was worth 250 in 2018 and it increased by the average assessment increase of whatever it was, 2. Let me see if I can see it here. I, um, perhaps John knows that more than anybody, but, um, I've, I've seen 200, I've seen 250. It's, it's all over the map. So I just use 250. The average, according to OMPF document, is 291.
I don't have to use anything. I just use it for example.
And just a comment that it's the M-PAC assessed value, not the sales appraised value, real estate value. It's very different. No comment. Well, there we go. Mr. Green?
Thank you, David Green. I have two questions. Um, it was, we were having some microphone challenges today, but what revenue would be realized from the 1% levy that the mayor has talked about?
Mayor?
I believe it's $81,000.
Thank you.
And that's not on the table tonight.
Understand.
But it'll come back.
I'm thinking so. Um, at our first budget meeting, I spoke about the infrastructure and water issues, primarily in the Brighton by the Bay community, and how will this matter be addressed operationally and financially?
Go ahead.
Financially, I believe we've included money in the budget that would have been a part of the EO, EO, OER, um, um, consultation report. So they recommended, I can't remember the number, 150-ish thousand dollars, and that has been included in our budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So financially, that's how that will be taken care of. Um, operationally, I would, as you know, Mr. Green, I would leave that to staff to, to advise.
So the 150 in OER was primarily addressing the issues with the pond, I believe.
Yes.
The issues I spoke about were infrastructure issues on the roadway that are causing more and more, uh, issues, especially now as we get into the melt. I have not seen any money allocated towards even, even an investigation as to what the next steps might be.
Did you wanna come in?
I'd actually ask Mr. Parkinson to comment if he could. Excuse my back.
Um, there's engineering, uh, costs that are covered in our operating budget, and I plan to do investigations to determine the best path to move forward with that development and the deal, uh, to address the surface water issues from some discharges or poor curbs or some storm upgrades, that sort of thing. So, uh, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of capital works done this year. It's gonna be more of a plan moving forward on how best to address all of the issues, rather than just the one or two spot areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? No? Okay. So, uh, we will expect a, uh, a meeting next week for a second draft. And so at this point, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Um, that the March 26, 2019 Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting be adjourned at, sorry, moved by Counselor Bateman, seconded by Counselor Anderson, at 8:35 PM. All those in favor? Thank you.